Turn the stadium on. On the top.
So that hand side.
There you go. Definitely. Very fast. I'll just let me get everything. Well. Hold power on off. Oh, you gotta hold it down? Okay. I don't know if that matters, but. Looks so sacred record for a second. It does look like those old bookies like they call to order a meeting of a sworn planning commission. On uh five oh three P M on nine nine twenty twenty five. First item uh agenda review um about land use regulations. I want to review and set meeting for um. P C applicants, we got three uh two applicants right now. So we can just talk about those applicants and talk amongst ourselves how we want to.
So out one advertised.
Oh yeah, it's been advertised since.
Great, you can tag me on Facebook.
We've been, hey, Greta, good to see you. And and we advertised it and then one of the applicants said it was the old thing, so Christina updated the. Website recently, so that made a new deadline, I think it's Friday to put in application. Oh, we have two applications for two seats.
Alright.
We'll see what who they are and what they have. So actually, since Greta is here now, I'm gonna move that to four B.
Right.
I was gonna do that right after review or minutes, but we'll make that four B applicants. So we can talk to Greta. And Robin from um. Habitat, I did send him the link, he was gonna try and do a minute, but he's in Ireland, left yesterday. So I don't know if he'll be getting, nobody asked me for the link, we'll see if you see. Uh I I think we have, I have a pretty good idea of kind of what they were looking for, what they kind of gave, we talked a little bit about that in this breakthorn, but I don't think that's too major. Got a couple things that go along with some of those early changes. So I think we'll be making changes, my hope would be to make changes to bylaws within the next. Couple months, okay? Um, so anyway. Uh review meeting minutes, May seventh twenty twenty five, um I will entertain a motion. Night, still I'm struggling to think this was our last meeting, we had a couple meetings in June, I thought, but. That's how those were here, didn't they? We'd still have meetings if we had four, should we go back to minutes?
We'll make that motion, give a a few of the minutes from May seventh.
So motion been made and seconded, motion was made by Heather and seconded by Oliver, or are you, you're taking notes on that? Christina just asked me to state that for her, so when she doesn't.
Shouldn't I look up?
Um, so motion been made and seconded, any um discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, speak in my head, I say aye, aye, aye. Motion hears. Uh, are those the good ones, or did she give you, we'll wait until she gets here to do that. Uh, land use and development regulations and review, um I don't think we really have anything in here. We haven't one of that stuff, this is the last, so you want. Um, oh, we have another. She's here, fair, she's here.
She's here.
Um. Greta. See today crowd, very busy meeting. Jesus.
Very much.
Definitely. Send it to me now, so one of the things, and just to set the stage a little bit, um. One of the things that's mainly on the agenda um is to talk about essentially projects similar to what Habitat is doing for the RIV. Site and so and what that would look like, and I know we maybe talked about it, but just. Uh, would be potentially multiple buildings on a singular small lot potentially here in village. So what Corey used to describe that at one point was cottage or courts. Um, and I'm not a hundred percent sure that's a proper definition is.
That's kind of an accepted term.
Accepted term, okay. Um, and the reason Habitat may have issues at the RIV is because they don't meet the minimum size for a. P U D, P U D, because in our bylaws, a P U D has a minimum size, which is three.
It's five acres.
Five acres.
Well, yeah, I I think that there's like a few different approaches, you could. Just tweak those P U D regulations by uh eliminating the minimum lot size for P U Ds in the center of the. Allowing them in the central business and eliminating the minimum lot size in residential district. That would be a very like technical edit.
What's the reason for making it requiring it to be like five acres before it can be a?
I don't know why.
I mean, fill up minimum lot.
Yeah, you still, if you're actually creating a subdivision, then the minimum lot size, actually the. P U D le- regulations would allow or give you.
More room.
Flexibility to like reduce the minimum lots.
But not the like the size.
The overall density would have to, so you'd have to say, okay, how much could you typically subdivide, and then you could make a lot smaller to when you go over the number of. Units that would be allowed on spots or. Yeah, it's it's hard when we start thinking about multi-unit dwellings, that's something I was thinking about.
Yeah.
Your regulations, great. Um, you don't really regulate density for multi-use components, which is a good thing, but you know, it's. Think when you're thinking about that in terms of like the forty percent density bonus, when you're not really regulating density, you're just regulating like.
Sizes.
Uses per lot.
Uses per, we're regulating uses per lot.
Right.
I see, but we are regulating density to a certain extent because. What is it, uh, four units on fifth of an acre?
It's formidable. It's almost as wide and short.
Does that make sense?
Um. Up to four units on fifth of an acre, you're allowing, you're.
Four units, but not four.
You're allowing to, you're allowing a lot size, yes, you're allowing like a property to subdivide lots that would allow for.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Um, four lots per.
Five lots per acre.
Five lots per acre.
Right.
But you're you're just saying like, okay, you can subdivide seventy eight hundreds per foot lots and put a unit there, but but you can also put a.
Four units.
Only up to four?
Up to four is where.
Well, that's an acre.
It should be aligned with the speed and change to here.
Four units on fifth, I think it's, well, I I I could be wrong, and I get, I mean, so what are they trying to put over there? So what essentially what they wanted to have is.
Maybe some of that map.
Um, it wasn't my phone, that's why I was, you know, essentially what they wanna put is like. A few single families and a few, a couple duplexes, but the law is. One, wait.
Because so you have multi-family family dwelling, which is a conditional use. And your minimum lot size is eighty seven hundred square P. So.
There is no nothing saying what multiples can be.
You could put a twenty unit dwelling, eighty seven hundred foot view.
As long as they met. I thought they could have them, yeah, but they would have this need setbacks.
It's it's dangerous that you have to allow at least in front of units, but they put some sash into it, not the tap, so you're allowing at least, and you can go away, oh.
And but the tap for us would be. Reasonably.
That's what they're having.
That building that would fit there.
I think there's eight.
And the fact that we can only go um three stories.
Eight hundred and one six.
Is that like. Plus one if they're fire or if they're.
Sorry, what was your one?
They get three stories plus one if they are.
Right, so you might have a a height limit.
We have a height limit of four stories.
Yeah. Yep.
On a fifth of an acre. So if you do the math of what size structure can fit on that fifth of an acre. That would, yes, they can have unlimited units, but they can't fit physically fit on, you know.
Right, there's gonna be like design limitations based.
That's what I'm doing, that's.
And the size of the lot, you know.
Right.
Right, but you're not saying like, oh, you can only like, otherwise there's no limit on how many units you built, it's just based on those dimensional standards.
No. Exactly.
Yeah.
So how big are they?
And parking.
And parking, yeah.
Dimensional parking and lock coverage.
Yeah.
No, but how big are the bill, I just can't figure out higher.
They not that, they need some like.
You know, they're practically tiny houses, you know, they're they're really.
There's, so why don't they just build it like a, like a.
Thirty one by twenty two. And what I think of is like a motel where it's like same idea, but they're actually connected.
There's attached, so they would be like.
Like there's like a.
Yeah.
I think they're thinking that this is gonna be an attractive alternative to doing that.
Yeah. They have.
Not gonna be, that's gonna be crazy.
They have the buildings closer.
Yeah.
But here's the thing.
So didn't I read in here, they they admit P U D is the minimum of thirty feet apart, those are ten, so you'd have to look, you'd have to look at that part. Where did I begin here?
Oh, really?
So are they building this, like, what is the? So who are they building it for?
They're gonna sell an habitat house.
How, so Habitat can sell the houses?
They'll sell the structure, so own the land.
Will they own the land and then sell it to change like?
That's like a Honda, like.
Yeah. That's similar to how Habitat.
If you have the minimum distance.
I don't know, like.
It's a pay dollar showing thirty feet and we always have that in my neighborhood or a bigger park to go loop around in, you know, like.
I mean, so I think what they're doing, I just don't understand why they don't just.
The reason we went to ten feet, listen, here's why, the reason I.
But if I say the D R V may waive or modify the standard, or whatever, better anyway, the P U D with adjacent development or similar current open.
This thing, that's like.
No, that is that ten feet is the the fire rate in between, so anything under ten feet, the walls have to be real.
Are these a big room story?
These I think are double, two, two floor.
Two stories.
Yeah. Yeah, it's so this would be.
It's just the square footage, the twelve square footage.
Uh, thirty one by twenty two, so what is the?
Size of this room?
Nine, huh? No.
Got that pretty close to the size of this room.
Close to this.
What if it's two stories, that's a pretty good size.
Yeah, and six eighty two.
So.
That's like.
Thirty hundred square feet.
That's my house.
That's like what coming to something that is or something.
Yeah, his or twelve thirty hundred square feet with a one story.
I mean, I certainly think there's a need for this size.
I do.
Building, especially like if your kids have moved out and you really wanna stay like.
Or the opposite, if your kids are moving in.
And with those.
These are, yeah, but these are habitat, so these will be income based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, which is fine, but the thought process is this, and you guys may remember when the gentleman who owns the liquor store buildings. Came in and talked about wanting to potentially rebuild there or do something different.
Yeah, or something.
So my brain goes to not just like, this is the first in my mind of potentially many.
Yeah.
Or so we're essentially other places so long.
Parking.
Same with you and Carrie.
The idea would carry across town, so this is why I've. When Habitat brought this up to me, the more I thought about it and talked to them, and full disclosure, I've been talking with Habitat about how I can work with them with my school to build. Panelize buildings like this for them, so this is how this whole comp, this is why I know a little bit more, because Robin and I have been talking about this along with other stuff, um. I can see this happening in the village, someone could buy, for example, the house on Fourth Street that the town is trying to sell, that is an absolute. Piece of.
Which which building?
The fourth street where the person died last year. Someone could potentially buy that house and buy one or two houses next to it. And and.
Fourth street.
Yeah.
Somebody died.
Where the shooting happened, right by the railroad crossing.
That's the second street.
That's Fourth Street, right?
That's the second street, mm-hmm.
That is Fourth Street.
So, I mean, really, if this is like point six acres, you can buy a lot of lots and so and so on, if one lot is bigger than that.
No, we're not quite ready.
Yeah, all.
Even the bigger one, like the ones with big.
So let's just start one.
My my lot is twenty six seven.
So this is village or C D?
This is village.
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 And they would have water and sewer, I've seen other.
Other sewer. So it's the big, you could have.
So the way we are. And if you you I, that's funny when you look at her.
Red limitations.
Um.
I thought village was we had more flexibility.
So do they, do they meet amongst the multiple structures?
No, we feel like point three six. But it's a long lot.
So do they meet?
It's point three six.
Point three six.
So.
Are they having any issue with um?
South River from South River?
Yeah.
With um like a range.
Uh.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing, 'cause we've got a lot of the previous picture of the building still there.
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
What's what percentage, I thought we had forty percent lot coverage, it would mean.
Twenty, sixty.
This is gonna be like eighties.
Yeah, one.
Uh, he did, Robin did the math. I I that's not really, that's that's um.
If you did it, would graduating, would that?
One part of your?
No, it's still a curvy, is it one part of the space per zone?
Sixty five percent. Say that again?
Is it one parking space per unit?
Uh, I believe, I believe he's got a couple extras in there.
Yeah.
He's a visitor.
So the, so the only concern that we need to address then is the number of structures.
No, the ability to do multiple structures on one lot.
That's upsetting.
It's not, it's exactly.
But he needs everything else he has, like the.
Sir, um, I think he was looking at setbacks, he had the setbacks. He was working off of our bylaws to be completely.
The old bylaws?
The new bylaws. He's got like a five foot setback.
He said, a multi-family over four units is in here as a conditional use, so the D R V could approve that.
Yeah, yeah.
The setbacks are ten on the side. Fifteen.
The way that it could, this would is not a multi-unit dwelling though.
Because they're separate.
There's not, correct.
Because that's the P U D, so which may change the setbacks, that's the other reason why, right, with a P U D, you can either request different setbacks.
Ands. And also, what does?
Don't worry about this.
How many square feet is point three six acres, that's not very many square feet.
It's more than the eighty seven hundred you need, which line is that?
How far is the ten thousand?
Uh.
Is this the line? Probably not the line, 'cause it looks like it's a different part of the lot. Two three dollars.
We changed since the.
So point two is eighty seven hundred square feet. So it's probably what it's about.
It's how much?
Eighty seven.
Six, seven?
It's fifteen thousand six hundred eighty one square feet, okay. So it meets the ten thousand, you don't even have to waive that.
Why, there, what is the ten thousand?
The minimum lot size within an approved P U D show me ten thousand, oh, that's within. And that's if you're gonna subdivide.
So what if we want, what if we change the the um.
So if we did. I'm gonna do that.
Could you do special P U Ds in the village?
The use.
So my thought is to do a potentially do a different set of standards for a P U D. That is serviced by public water and sewer. Which is the same way our housing is set up, is you have different regulations if you're serviced by public water and sewer. And that was kind of what I was thinking, whether or not that lets this work, I don't know.
The only thing I'm concerned about is what's what's behind that, is that cool and green?
That's a railroad tracks.
On the right side, so there's not an issue then with as far as stacking houses on top of neighbors.
I mean, not that house, this is.
Not real.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, the way that that map is framed right now.
It's it looks like the buildings right here.
Yeah, that's a house right there, right?
Yes.
So are those people, is that gonna cause issues with the neighbors?
With that like.
I think it's gonna be better than the cats and rats that were coming out of the RIV.
We say that and we change the rules when there's fifty people.
Well, as long as we are meeting with step backs, right?
Well, no, we're not necessarily changing the rules for this project, we're looking at ways to be.
Yeah, but I thought you said like, the thing is to be a P U D, they can request smaller setbacks.
Acting with their community. Correct, which would then give neighbors the opportunity to.
What did you say, the setbacks were ten feet?
He's showing five.
Yeah, but and the the way it's written now, for the building is ten.
Fifteen in the rear.
Hmm.
Choose a rear.
But that would be a rear, that'd be a side side.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Is this driveway going to like?
So right now, the sides are ten feet and the rear is two feet.
So he's.
Who put side setback?
Minimum height is thirty five feet or two and a half stories.
That is exactly.
So why can't he move the, just move the buildings another five feet away from the lot?
I'm sorry, did you say something?
I'm just saying setbacks out there.
Because of driveway, this is to scale, I guess, from what I'm told, this is to scale, and this is just a sketch, like trying to. What they are trying to do is offset the costs of. The property.
I like the project, I just, the one thing that worries me is that those neighbors aren't gonna like the, and it's.
Yeah, but don't forget.
But it's, it's not, it's cutting it in half.
Here's the one thing I would say.
It can require screening, so we don't see.
It can require screening, that neighbor, that one neighbor you're specifically worried about is another rental property.
They do a screen.
Not that that matters, not.
They shouldn't have less, right?
No, but the the neighbor, what I'm getting at is.
It's not, it's not somebody that's been there for ever.
You're, you're worried about a a homeowner, you're worried about a homeowner.
They claim they're.
And what I would say is someone who owns that as a rental property is gonna be more likely to want other people to have rental properties. Would be more receptive to that, would be now, Mr. Bria, that lives on the corner here, obviously he sits further away, but he's been living in that house for.
Since the river's open.
You're talking the other side, there's quite a gap in there, so.
That's what I'm saying, he he's further away, but he's been living in that, those people have been in that house for.
Right, but to Oliver's, like, it looks, it looks like. See, if you look at that picture and if you look at this, it shows the building right on top of it, but if you look at that picture, if that's the lot size, there's quite a bit of room between.
Those are. Correct.
That, that the driveway.
Yeah, you're not getting the houses next to the houses.
Yeah, it looks like there's a driveway set.
Yeah. So maybe that's what you're seeing on the driveway.
Maybe that's the driveway written in.
Yes.
So maybe it's not as bad, maybe you're not looking in other people's windows to be clearly. But I don't know, but.
So. Yeah, your house is pretty full.
You you should, you should, you know.
Taking a step back.
Sorry.
I think that there's some targeted changes that you can make to P U D standards that would allow for cottage court like this. And that would require you to adjust the minimum lot size, it would also require you to adjust the density. Um, because right now, the way you define density, um. You would only have to build one unit or or you would only be allowed to to build one principal use. On this lot based on the lot size. You you can't even get two principal uses, and you're not a principal, you, the way that it's defined, like each one of these would be a principal use. Like a a a sing- a single family dwelling, that's not allowed in the regulations, and it's not really allowed. In a way that, um, because of the way you're defining density, so there would need to be some tweaks there too, even though, 'cause it says you can increase it by fifty percent, that's two principal uses, so.
But what I, but if they were trying to get a P U D. These would be separate lots? Is that how they were, they're trying to get around that?
No, I don't think that, I think that you need a bylaw change to be clarified that you can have more than one principal use on a lot. And that that number of principal uses is allowed.
A number, general.
Right, 'cause right now it says that, so it says the den, allowed district density. Sorry, moving back, that um, the number of dwelling units allowed in any P U D at the discretion of the D R V. Is that, at the discretion of the D R V may be increased in accordance with the following standards. The per, and then it talks about increasing by twenty five percent the number of dwelling units and by fifty percent. But then the, it says the allowed district density is calculated by dividing the parcel size by the minimum lot size. And then. And so that gives you the allowable density of a certain number of lots or principal uses, not units. And a principal use could be a multi-unit dwelling with twenty units.
Correct.
But it doesn't speak to um a multi-unit dwelling that could be separate.
So if we just.
All all units dwelling to the definitions and then.
But not multi-use or separate, so.
Well, well.
That's the issue, is there's there's not a clear provision in your bylaws for how to deal with multiple residential structures on a lot.
Sorry. Multi-units.
Which we, so I I thought we took care of, so maybe we didn't, because, but what I've. And I could be completely wrong, but aren't they trying to turn these all into separate lots? So that mitigates your issue?
I think, no, I think it's all common, it's common ownership, I believe, and it's just the structure that's owned separately.
So then, how size it a P U D need, then if, once a P U D mean.
Right, that's.
They're looking to make multiple lots of smaller sizes.
How about you, it doesn't have to be a subdivision, it just has to be.
It doesn't have to be a subdivision, that's where, that's my sticking point, okay?
No. And the reason why they're doing it is because there's no way to approve this type of development under where your regulations are currently written. One thing I was gonna say, so we can go in and just tweak your P U D regulations. Not too big of a subs- not too substantial of an update that would allow for something like this.
Okay.
Another option, like um. There's a few other ways, you could look at integrating act like cottage court standards, either within your P U D, so it would be like a type of P U D, if that's how you want it to be reviewed. Or it could be like a specific use standard, and it's kind of like a building type. And so you would define what a cottage court is, there would be a layout for it, and there would be specific standards for how the individual residential structures would be laid out on the property. Um.
So is there a way we can make?
Like Jericho, Jericho just did it actually, and I printed out, um, this was, I think, a presentation when they were doing your project, and then this is what they ended up adopting, I haven't had a chance to really take a look at it. But so there's like a re- a local example to like look to and exam from, or look to and adapt.
That's huge.
Um, I also found an ordinance by the city of Keene on that, and I think that there's probably others, um.
Five feet from property line, six feet from a day's adjacent buildings, twenty feet.
But if this, if you're really looking to be able to replicate this, I think that you might wanna keep your P U D standards to be. More for those like rural type conservation subdivisions.
Yeah.
And then develop something along the 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 lines of this that would be amended for more um.
No. Thanks.
Dense development or dense areas of your town.
No, why do we have to take the water and sewer?
Does cottage court have, does the land have to stay in one lot, like one owner?
Right.
So you wanna look at this a thousand square foot.
That, yeah.
Uh, should you wanna look at that?
And that's just a square foot allowance, though, that's not.
No, but as far as, my concern is, is if we change this, and then you get somebody that's gonna go in. And instead of having fifth of an acre, they do this and then sell the. Like I, it works if like one owner maintains ownership of the land and then they sell the structure, structure.
I think there would be a provision that says you can only um subdivide and sell these lots, if you can subdivide them according to the, which you would not be able to.
Yeah. Yeah.
So it would, they would kind of be stuck to be.
Yeah. How this way, how do they build, how, because they're gonna, at that point, you have.
Is there like a lot fee, how do, who maintains all the grass?
So be an H O A.
H O A. Who's gonna own it after Shimpling, will we sell the Shimpling housing or somebody like that?
I would say the H O A, 'cause the H O A would own the land.
So the property would still own it?
No, the property owners would own it, still not.
Like whoever.
No.
No.
Like whoever owns the houses, like a H O A.
The people own the houses.
You have an old.
So. The H O A would own it all, the H O A.
Somebody's gotta be the president of the H O A.
And how do you?
Been invited. To me, these say two and then.
This H O A conversation's been on going through our whole bylaws.
Challenge.
With the water and of course, the quarries.
How do they, how do you permit um, like mobile home parks? How are those permitted?
Yeah, I was just thinking about.
Through our bylaws, 'cause that's basically, it's, they're way smaller lots than that.
That's why, that's why I'm there. 'Cause I was wondering, if you wanted to put flowers or gardeners, would you even wanna do that, because you don't own.
It's really a modern, like, it's the thing.
I don't know.
Yeah, this is not how we.
Yeah, that's a very. It's torn out, same thing, but.
Yeah. It it's not, it's some.
I'm, I don't, I don't cheer you so, because we have mobile parks on, if they had to be permitted somehow.
So the definition of a mobile home park. Is a parcel laying under single or common ownership or control which. Contains or is designated, designed, laid out or adapted to accommodate three or more mobile homes to occupy for living purposes, one fourteen.
What if we modify that?
If we modify that, there's not.
I was gonna, I was gonna make that.
I didn't think that you're.
Set of mobile homes that changes to to cottage.
Yeah, maybe. See, we found a lot of these.
This is part of what we're gonna do now, it's.
So C section four fourteen, which.
Not after.
Right, yeah, so a while back, and so that definition, it may still be referred to for a date. Not forming mobile parks that may exist, but their use, the way that mobile homes, a new mobile one would not be permitted would be through P U S, P U D standards. Which are probably not very.
Maybe, maybe change that though, to like the cottage.
Right, so any cottage, cottage court would, the any standards for a cottage court would also be a mobile home, but maybe you.
Yeah, but not say mobile.
You, right, exactly, it's the definition you.
Yeah, it's a. Like that definition she just ran was great, if you take out mobile home and put a structure.
That's.
Structures.
Right, or a hall of cottage court, and maybe there's.
That's what I mean, hall.
That's associated with mobile homes that doesn't.
Hall, hall cottage, but take that exact definition of.
Use it for cottage court.
Yeah, but just take out what's where it says mobile homes and put structures. Because it's what it say, the common one or.
Right.
Structures could be prefabricated or.
It says one common or.
I don't know, I mean, the minimum of.
It says one common owner, but it's the minimum of three.
And you're right, that could work and you could also look at, um, there are some specific design standards around a cottage court that, um.
Are you saying?
Look at that sort of shared space being sort of.
Like this picture where they've got a guy in the middle instead of everybody, to be honest, I'd rather have the home rather than.
Exactly.
That over this, looks like chicken breasts.
Yeah.
Just when you put them like that, looking at each other like that, it's just.
It's true.
Right.
Um.
So I mean, either way, you, I mean, I think that you don't have to require a design that or, you know, has a central courtyard.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, the cottage, the court part is like courtyard and I think it was intended to create kind of a neighborhood around a central green.
Mm-hmm. And that's well.
And those are. Two, they're out of water and sewer and Southern growth district here is a real pissed off the over itself.
Um, I would say these two are probably something that looks like urban south.
Yeah, more so than in the north, I'm just thinking whether it's like snow or other.
Um, that's why we just.
That's gotta be a little ten acres, it's five dash fourteen.
We can change this.
So I need to change that in the box.
Five dot fourteen?
Alright, so you do have specifics, yeah, it hurts.
So.
We'll develop and then search.
You found it.
Found it. Five dash fourteen.
I really like these finders.
You like them, like even today, I'm like, and last night I was like.
Right. I like it.
I can give them the finding.
You know what I can use of? We can use some of these.
To post it?
Well, I'm just thinking we're gonna start filling this up, that's. Uh, five fourteen mobile home park, mobile home park was approved in.
So that would make edits too, if you want it.
Yeah, let's ten V S A check through.
Each home site shall be at least fifty four hundred square feet area. And not less than forty five feet width. Oh, these are actually nothing bigger.
But so this is what we could do, is you could update your mobile home regulations to five court development standards. You could update that uh definition so that it was compliant with the mobile home park statute and then it was clarified in the definition that.
Is that still a thing in state?
Uh, you have to protect, there's certain standards around um existing non-mobile home park.
Yeah.
And how um you regulate, um. Like new non-informities on them and mobile home improvements and there's some difference there for that.
You can't, um, what sort of my use?
You can't like zone them out by saying, you know, like, oh, you're, you can't like create standards because you wanna.
Yeah.
Because you wanna.
That created.
Means and then sort of zone them out and say you can't exist anymore, so.
Yeah.
I think all that's.
Could those, could those sort of buildings work under mixed use?
I think that's great, like. Would be affordable housing.
What's up?
Um. I don't think it could be as mixed use, um.
Is it inside looking?
Yeah.
I can't read.
It's rough, but yes.
Completely, so.
The trees, the trees are pretty rough there.
I do wonder the owner of this property would flip up something.
They would, they would.
For funsies.
I think there would be issues with like setback and frontage and maximum.
I'm seeing that.
Yes, I think we gotta research the cottage court.
I I like that idea of basically taking it and putting it in here instead of a P U D.
Re- replacing at the mobile home.
Yeah, because the P U D thing is actually used in a lot of other places that it like opened up. That we don't think about.
Or do you just add that as a new?
Yeah. You could, you could create, yeah, you could have this be a new, a new cottage court that would be approved with a.
Cottage court.
Cycline review and conditional use.
Right.
Uh, cause you're not subdividing land.
Be five, one or two, that makes more sense, like this.
I would probably replace it with mo- not have mobile home park and cottage court though.
Don't we have to unlock a lot more?
You could find that, we can integrate mobile home into the cottage court so that it's.
They could almost be the same density, so something like this.
Right.
I mean, not something like this, but well, those are thirty, uh, those are twenty two wide, so they could be double, they could essentially buy. Double wides for this if they wanted to. Like custom, they have to be custom there, they're not that short, but.
Yeah, it might be.
Does that make sense? You you want.
Would, would it have cross space or basement?
Yeah. There.
I think they're planning to do slum upgrade.
Yeah, because of the. And there, that part of town is wet, I was literally just talking to Bernie last week, he lives down the road a little ways. And Bernie, I didn't realize, even though they sit so high on the river, there's a giant clay bed. It's about three feet down the water level there, it's about three feet even though the river sits like. Fifty feet below that, right, I don't know, get rid of the dam. Mount all those field before it goes on in that drain that way. Um.
So I, I think that it makes sense.
Cottage courts.
To develop some specific, this is the type of thing you wanna encourage, develop some specific cottage court standards, I think there's a few tweaks you can make to.
So you.
I don't even have this if you want.
Okay.
Make it fit.
I hope so, he's scribbling all over his.
Well, you made all of it, right?
I didn't, I am gonna need to.
Oh, awesome.
I think you're right on that one, I have some.
I'm just trying to know, cottage courts, new standards, make it fit so, or make it fit for mobile homes.
And cottage courts.
So when are they, when are they looking to start today?
You wanna make sure your lot is big enough.
They've got it, it's, they'll just want us to do the environmental cleanup first and they're trying.
So they won't be doing this.
Well.
And they have to supply transfer, well, they're, they're trying to get purchasing sales agreements right away, which I think is either has been done or is about to be done. And um before they finalize the plans and I think.
So it's not like we need to get these.
No, well, here's, here's what I was told though.
Okay.
I was told that he kinda need, that you need to know where the structures are gonna sit because that has to do with remediation.
Right, you can't finalize the corrective action plan until we finalize the cleanup plan. But it has to do with like moving dirty dirt.
So what what kind of, what about, how much do we have to do to change that, we have to warn meetings and all that stuff, like we did a lot, so it's gonna be a.
It takes a few months to do it.
Yeah, that's why we're getting on board, because I think my assumption would be they would like to do the, the cleanup, construction.
Right.
Next year.
Spring.
Yeah.
So.
Well, probably not the spring at this point.
But it'll be fall, you know, summer time, next, next construction team, so my assumption would be, my assumption would be we wanna have a bow in this.
Yeah.
Nothing happens fast.
My assumption would be we wanna have a bow in this. By the first of the year, so the permitting and stuff like that could be finished so that they could potentially take.
And we can do the corrective action plan and get them set up with their cleanup funding so that, you know, they could, they could be going out a bit in the spring.
Yeah.
So are we writing a new standard for this or is that something that Greta's gonna do and we're gonna look over?
That's what we're gonna talk about. Is that something you?
Okay. I think we have capacity to do these level up, yeah, and this is something that I'm, you know, super interested in, so yeah.
We would love to be.
I'm willing to add it to my list with that.
Well, we would love to even be a pilot for the air, you know what I mean, like this is.
Yeah, we haven't developed, we haven't had a community that wanted to develop cottage court standards, so I'm interested in that.
Yeah, I I.
And they don't look bad, they mean.
How does it feel?
I think it's another tool, I think it's another tool to help us and.
I've been wanting on this for a while actually because it's like young adults and we, you know, empty masters, this is a perfect option.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's.
Other than, uh, other than the like having to have, what is it called, um, associates.
A lot of that.
They like way, other than that, that's.
Some people love H O As, though, I've never, anyone knows H O A.
I like your place, I think. All around here, all around here.
Well, but I think in other states and there.
And I, and I wish that like.
They're not, the problem with H O As is the same problem with local government, nobody wants to do anything, so nothing gets done and then it just.
You know, you know, for, I wish.
That's super maintenance and then you have to like.
It falls into a.
And as for the heat haze.
Yeah.
When it goes before the D R V, if the neighbors don't like it, they can request that they put up trees for swimming and stuff like that.
I think our D R V would, I mean, it shows trees on that map, doesn't it?
Yeah.
We, yeah, we. Um.
It's unfortunate, one of these buildings isn't like a community space though, that would make it.
Yeah, but it's, how do you get a community space when?
Really that. Cause you've got such a small area and you, if you had like a room that you could gather.
Yeah, but.
But then that's one less yourself, so.
Well, it's not about that.
Who's gonna clean, make the main thing and it's just for the nature way.
And, and let's. Someone. Someone, someone, well, some of these habitants are always the most. Yeah, some of us.
Lots of bad as a people and.
Nice.
Now, when you're talking about with those habitat homes and the parking and stuff like that, do you wanna put that into standards that the parking needs to not be at the road?
Yeah.
You talked about that before.
I would say we put in like.
Not plans.
What's that, just for other ones that I could.
Other one where you see all of the mess.
Yeah, I think that you should require.
You wanna add.
Especially if this is intended to be in your areas that have access to water and sewer, which are your, essentially your neighborhoods, right? So you wanna kind of sort of continue that and if there's gonna be parking, you want it to be on the side or the rear.
And the reason being like if, and not to call out, but. There's some habitat homes in our community that the front yards are absolutely full of.
Cars.
No, for lack of a better word.
Yeah.
Um.
And then I put it in the backyard, I did, you know.
I'll be new though.
Probably.
Yeah, so, um, but that's, that's fine, it's just we gotta be also mindful of that as well, with their standards. Um, and it's not a habitat family, cause it's out of their control, it's too many people that happen to buy. It's not true, there's a very nice habitat house that's been taking love care on the river road, probably most people who knows a habitat house. Um. No, no one. No, no, um. Then it probably fifteen one year now, um. So, yeah.
On your place to live?
Yeah, um. The other thing that goes along with this, Greta, since you're here, one of the other things I wanted to talk to them about is. Creating if, in your travels or you see or whatever, not including this, if you've seen a checklist or a prepared document. For the D R V to follow potentially when they're reviewing projects like this. This, so the reason I bring that up is like recently I attended again, I'm in the D R B meeting. They had a whole document that they follow line by line by line for like eighteen or twenty items, like reviewing projects just like this, so if there's.
It would be specific to your bylaws and a lot of times it's done by, um.
Right. Staff.
Staff that does a specific report for.
I feel like you need more like.
That comes in. So what happens is it's, it's like a development review report or, um, so someone applies with a conditional use or subdivision. And the uh the staff prepares a report on that development where they say here's a summary of all the different like. Things that we care about and then here are all the regulations that apply and here are all the things that you're gonna wanna look at specific to this project.
And so that.
We have templates for those.
That's the boilerplate is what I'm referring, not something.
But so it's not like, this is, yeah, cause it's, it's a template, so you would have to go tear it specific to each announcement.
Yes. In house, um, and and where that was I found very, very helpful and and. This meeting I was at in particular is because it was a pretty hot button issue. And the board did a very good job only allowing people to speak to each one of those items as they got there. So what that would be helpful for our D R B is if Spencer had that list of twenty items or whatever that boilerplate was. The chair of this meeting would only, okay, the next item is da 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 da, parking requirements are da 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 da. This product needs parking requirements, who has issues with parking requirements?
The level like that.
Moving to the next item, because what it did was control the interest of parties in a way that it wasn't like Johnny just stand up and.
Yeah.
Blurt it out, every copy he's got with the whole project, it brought it through and it helped the meeting, I was like.
If you have the ability to, um.
Well, not only that.
Have staff that has the time to do that.
I thought whole my conference.
Well, then they, the other thing is you don't get the D R B, I have to start slaying through their books, looking for every rule for that, sign it up, but. We have, do we have two, there's only a couple right now?
The, the, no, the point I was making.
Your place.
So we had.
All I was trying to make when thinking about this.
Do you?
Thinking about our end goal, would we to hopefully come up with some sort of document that could. They could use, we could build potentially to follow this review, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, I'm trying to.
Just why do you do a packet for them, right, or is that slick?
No, it's just a bunch of copies that say, here's.
Copy of the application and the map.
So it's not like this like.
This would be, yeah, this would be like a, you know, a, a lot of, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the project summary.
And.
It's applicable by law language.
Yeah, that's what I think would be great, because I mean, the the D R B meeting is only what, two hours?
The whole.
And to have to go and start looking instead of they.
How much should we do if we come here?
No, that's what I mean, they should be able to walk in with like a packet sitting there of all the people that night and have everything.
The answer to the questions, right, so that's the point I'm trying to make is if, if the cottage court. Bylaws were written in a way that the questions were easy to answer, it may make it easier to review that, does that make sense? That, that's the only thing, I wasn't asking you to like put that paper together, but it's like, be mindful that hopefully at some point we can get to a point where we have. Specific questions like, maybe it's as simple as mobile home park, the part, you know what I mean, like each of these items, is it a total of ten acres? Yes, check, does that make sense, like, that's all I was suggesting.
Yeah, I mean, that's my goal for meeting by law.
Okay, no, I, I assume that, I just.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, that meeting flowed very, very well for how.
Mm-hmm. Certainly.
Big that development and.
Helps you stay focused and organized and um stay on point of what are the issues you should be focused on.
And.
Um, what are we making a decision on here, yeah.
And that's as much for the board as it is for, I'm trying to be proactive with potential. Ideas we may have, and like I said to you today, who knows, we might have a swan win project in our, in our future and. I don't, were any of you there for any of those meetings, were you in here for any of those meetings?
I was. I, I.
Oh, yeah, you were videoing, you were videoing, so I wanted, like, my brain always goes back, not that there's anything wrong with those, but my brain always goes back to how like.
I was videoing.
Acted those meetings were and like trying to help the D R B to manage.
Yeah.
This is all.
I remember thinking, whoa, like, I get to here like twenty minutes early and like I should've got here earlier. And it's like, is that the matter wrong meeting, why are there so many people here?
He's playing with life. It was crazy.
Yeah, exciting enough, cause there's a lot of energy in the room of people caring about the community.
Very. Yeah.
Alright.
Perfect.
Well, I like that approach, that's fine, um. We'll do that.
If, yeah, let us know which, I know you got a lot going on, but. You can try to bang it out pretty quick, we're gonna hopefully have another meeting in two weeks to review.
Back.
No, no, but I'm getting, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you and I.
Okay.
Two weeks is hopefully what my hope is to review these two applicants, because right now we are, oh, we have two member openings and we have two applicants.
Okay.
So two weeks would be that and then again next month, then my hope would be to have those people potentially on board when we jump into this stuff, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I'm thinking maybe I see you again in. If, if a month is, yeah, if, if a month is too short, then.
At least a month, it not. If you're not ready around in the spring, then you can push forward.
But don't forget, there's gonna be two months worth of meetings after we approve something.
I mean.
For probably here.
What, what's your next, what's your October meetings?
We, that's tonight's schedule.
It's usually like the ones to, uh, are there Tuesdays now, I like Tuesdays better.
Well, I'm, that's part of. Let's, we're gonna have that conversation, we're gonna have that conversation.
Tuesday, Tuesday seemed to work better for everybody.
Go on, first Tuesday.
Fundays.
First Tuesday can't flip work, first and third.
Well, we gotta.
Fundays.
Maybe the second we go out over, so.
Solid.
Today's a work.
That'll be here, it's all helpful, but that's. Monday doesn't work for me.
That's why we get Tuesdays, Tuesdays.
Wait, that stays left.
Actually, Tuesdays would work, maybe.
That's a, maybe one Tuesday.
Tuesdays might work now, my mom's had a surgery.
Anyway, she, she kinda wants to leave, so we can talk about this.
Yeah, sorry.
I feel, yeah.
I can you got used to meetings are going to be.
Sounds good, I think probably the, the beginning part of October is not good, but it, it's, I can either do like the second half of October or the first part of November.
May I say beginning, you mean first week, second week?
First and second would be probably.
Well, we'll.
Actually, second and third of October, second first part.
So like the twenty first or twenty eighth, okay.
Third or.
You can do the twenty first, that's a slipboard meeting, yeah.
So let's plan on giving comments, we need.
October twenty eighth, let's go then.
Yeah, I need to do the other.
Like Tuesday, Thursday. I mean, I wanna go children.
What's that?
At five P M.
Any day besides Monday.
Fives I can, yes, fives I can do.
Okay.
Uh. That does not work for me, that's my wife's duty.
Oh, that's what I was saying, we can review this online.
I don't care, as, as, as long as we have enough, yeah.
I have two for November.
And let's take it, maybe number one, you've got two extra weeks.
Can we? Can we do second Tuesdays and then can I do meet here in November?
I think that would be a better.
Do you wanna do what?
Let's do November fourteenth, cause I'd like to do second Tuesdays and just stick with that.
Okay, two day.
Two happy children now, so like now I, my babysitter's just diminished even more.
I got you.
So and then November eleventh.
But that, what's that gonna do if it, so let's do this then. Then hmm problem is that also.
I supposedly not commit to October fourteenth if I come, if 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 I'm looking to come back with.
No, you're coming in November.
Okay.
You're coming with.
No, 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 it's November.
We're gonna meet in October, but you're gonna meet us in November because you said that you couldn't meet the first two weeks, but I'd like consistency on second Tuesday a month and just stick with it.
Okay. Alright, November.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second Tuesday.
And if we meet before you, we can we come up with anything we can get it sent to you.
Correct.
Then we send over.
Sounds good. So the only other thing I wanted to update you on is that um
I'll leave it to you.
We're coming to, I'm coming to the slackboard um. We're. Emily Koff is coming to the slackboard next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday.
The fifteenth or the twenty second, sixteenth. Sixteen, sorry sixteen.
Nine sixteen.
Yes, that's one. Um. And Emily Koff is going.
Yeah.
And I I sent this slide board a memo that just explains that sort of the process that we've gone through um the way, you know, what the implications of our regional future land use map, which we're all explaining to you. Um but I what the item on the agenda specifically is is in order to opt in to tier one B, which is the Act fifty exemption for housing projects fifty units or less on ten acres or less. They have to sign a resolution and adopt a resolution to do that. And so that resolution is is what's on the agenda.
Okay.
So just updating you guys in case you wanna be there to support that conversation at all. Um and I did bring a copy of the memo if you're interested, um it also has just the final maps or at least the final draft maps, right? If they're not gonna be final, I'll put a land use review report up. But if anyone wants that, you're welcome to have it.
My question, so and that's Heidi sent me an email, that's the tier one to opt in. Right? And we're gonna opt in at the slackboard address.
Okay, the slackboard has to agree with us.
And we should potentially have a conversation with them about that first.
We're gonna learn about it on Tuesday.
Right, so they are either gonna, like hopefully they decide to take action and opt in on Tuesday.
No, the only reason I asked.
On Wednesday, sorry, Wednesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the sixteenth.
It's the back.
Wow.
The reason I ask is because Heidi sent me an email yesterday and asked me if we were opting into the tier and so that was on that list. That's not.
Uh it's up to the slackboard to approve it.
So while you were just talking, I was trying to find the email to make sure that they sent.
Yeah. 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 I didn't see the both Heidi and Bill on that memo that went out to um
So that's how.
Brian and um the chair of the select board, it was Brian and chair of the select board, all of the regional commissioners, Heidi and Bill. So all of those folks got that memo and then I didn't hear back and so then I emailed.
Sent it when you sent on the twenty first of August?
Yes.
So yeah, that um that's essentially what Heidi took and then sent to me this week and said if ask me if I knew they're if they were not opt in.
Are you going to tell them that?
Oh, you were on that too, plan.
Sure.
On that email?
Yeah.
Maybe that's why it's in, put it on my planning email?
I will.
Yes.
That's.
Slackboard meeting.
Um.
So we didn't.
I what, it is on my phone. The problem is is I got like ten different emails and my town emails. At least my worries. Um. Yes, you sent it on the twenty fourth first and then Heidi resent your same email to me again. Right. Okay.
The email, right? She knows you checked.
No, she sent it with my town email. That's why, but then she was sending me emails.
I send my town email all the time.
To my work email and I'm like.
She don't send me minutes.
Yes, we.
It's on our.
It's their mess.
I still don't have access to mine, so.
That's the reason the town.
If you ask Ryan, he can help you.
You can't.
Like I've done it once and then it.
I don't.
And.
Sorry.
I don't know.
Let's schedule time when you can come in and get.
Fix it.
I have no indication what type of discussion this is gonna be at this like board level. It might be a no brain or easy discussion. I don't know.
No, I mean you never really know what the what you're gonna get.
Yeah, that's pretty fair. Um. The sixteen six P M. Here, but that's.
That remains from right now.
But that's probably. Uh that is probably later on the.
Are you saying you'd like someone to be?
I'm saying I was gonna try and go there.
It's. I think it's important for Swan to opt in. But.
I don't understand why you could.
What you think.
It's up to you.
Well, it's up to you as a community.
As a family, you know, make you guys embrace.
Not attend it.
Well, I thought we already talked to.
Right. More supportive.
No.
Without, right?
Well, I think that that I mean would the slackboard be interested in hearing from the planning commission?
Can we sell it?
They might say.
Oh, we shop, can we shop?
They push support.
They push support.
Can we grab them on letters?
You support Nixon, yeah.
I would hope they would do that.
That's already gonna be a packed meeting.
What's else?
Well.
Is it gonna be in the beginning though?
That would pull.
That versus downtown, isn't it?
What's new town business?
This would be.
Oh, what's what's controversial, why are you talking?
Bunch of stuff. Um. Thanks, Fredo. Well, it was reach out to Joel. Our conversation with Joel. And. So that I.
You could say you could type a letter that we could give to them. You put a letter of support.
Each of us or we can.
Ross is good at typing.
We could have admin, administrator, like a letter.
Your.
She's not our.
That's.
Don't you know how to read?
I I need to remember to follow up to everyone that I originally sent patch to that um.
Assistant town administrator.
That are actually on the agenda now.
But this was the one that you spent.
Yeah, because that included all of the regional commissioners.
So we imported activities, you have it?
No, it's fine. I have.
So you sent it on the twenty first of August?
Great. Alright, that's so I'll see you guys on the eleventh and in the meantime, hopefully things go well.
I appreciate your work on those projects and because it's really a future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great community.
Really exciting. I mean, I'm involved on the Brownfield side as well, so.
Cause we had discussions about how I applied area over by the interstate exit and that didn't work out. And I I really like to see more opportunities for
Yeah.
you know, people that retired to stay in the community and this is pretty close to downtown. They could walk over and
Mm-hmm.
you know, get coffee or whatever.
Yeah. You know what, it's similar, they're attached, but um and it's I think that you could make it a little less Florida looking, but the development in St. Albans Town nearby the the Sash Highway, it's kind of like a cottage court because it has that courtyard.
Where is Franklin Park?
It kinda looks like tiki-taki, like um just like they're very uniform and it's like
Oh.
Going through.
The hint is like their shape.
Nice like. I have a Play-Doh.
Well, no, I think you're.
I'm talking about St. Albans Town.
Yeah, she's talking about Yonkers High School.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yonkers High School, not.
Resbrook.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Smiths.
And that's the the uh.
That's thirty five plus, but they're attached.
That's big, isn't it? They're not all attached though.
No.
There's, I think three or three.
There are two little buildings, but each building has several unit attached.
Yeah, I think each you, I think each building has.
Wonder how they built that.
You do.
I can.
There's a lot of thing.
I haven't built that one.
That'd be smart.
But anyway, just that's the only one that I, the closest version of a cottage school that I know of.
Yeah.
Um but yeah, I think it's it's great to be able to think about how do we how can we make regulations allowed.
Well, what I foresee is like we do have some some large lots, large village lots, potentially houses that need rework like
Yeah.
someone could double up two or three village lots and boom, do something like this in the village and and rebuild it.
Right. Right.
A lot like Alashan's was before they turned it into Notch.
Like. Right, but I think this is one option or like, you know, you can build like, you know, multi-unit in one structure that's like four units high, but then maybe you want an elevator um.
Cost.
Yeah, right, so.
Cost.
It's nice to have the flexibility to be able to do this and it adds variety for um but not the market as well and some people.
Yeah, I'm not with something which is younger than.
Interesting.
It is bigger.
So the upstairs land are habitat from.
Right, no, right now.
No.
I mean, like, so when you build these.
Yes.
It will.
Habitat.
Transferred to habitat.
What happened like an event that like habitats like I don't wanna own this land anymore?
At that.
They.
How does it? H O, the H O A would own the common land.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure the process for them. They must have to sell.
The H O A.
And then they like the last unit creates the H O A. I don't know how that works.
Some of them do, some of them don't.
Okay.
Something that small would probably sell it all pretty quickly.
So all these people pay taxes.
Jointly.
Jointly, okay, so they all.
All.
They would.
I'm sure.
I am.
Yeah, they would pay individual taxes.
So it's not like they get picked up.
It's. They're gonna get four tax bills, two from the village, two from.
They. They like. Like in.
Cause you gotta pay for the land and you have to pay for your building.
And then the H O A. Tax bill.
That's a, the H O A will pay for the land, then each person's gonna have to pay their.
Yeah. H O A fee.
And their house taxes.
Yeah.
Pay on the building.
The land taxes will be included in our H O A fee.
Correct. Along with snow.
But the building, the property, which you provide because you don't technically own the land, right?
Pull on the.
So the.
Yeah.
Pull joint.
The house and the home is cheaper.
That's true.
That but then you all.
Would you care?
Cause they're not.
When money's in your way, it's a waste.
Cause you're sharing the five thousand in taxes with everybody else, so your taxes are gonna be minimal.
On that end of things, like your structure, be taxed on some.
Sure, but.
But five is.
The purchase of the structure would be cheap.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. Hypothetically.
Regardless, how you look at it, the government is still gonna stay.
You're in the right.
Alright, take care.
Right, you're in the right job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi.
Alright, thank you. What's next?
Who?
So.
Would we set the next meeting?
Well, no, I think you set an other meeting before that. We got set.
So do you want to interview your applicants?
So let's talk about that.
You have to.
Uh we have two applicants. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know her, but I give her props because she sent fourteen more meetings than I offered.
But she gave her notice, she's getting done.
Oh, she's not working anymore. Um well, she lives over by. S- uh central school. And she has lived swamp, I mean, I'm sure it's, I mean.
Yeah.
She did send it very detailed, really.
Yeah, she, that was a lot more than I had to do. I was seeing that and I'm like, boy.
Yeah, I mean.
She might have been here.
This is, this is more my style. You can write what I'm not saying, it might have been a very short one.
I think I could relate to those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, she went above and beyond, which is a good sign.
Yeah.
Well, to be fair, that's what the posting said, it's a letter of intent and doesn't.
Oh, really?
I was just, but I will say about Sean is that I was just talking to Joey today and I was like, you know what we need on a zoning order? Is we need some.
Real contractors.
Experienced with uh real estate. With with real estate because they know about all kinds.
They have their hand on the pulse.
Yeah, so and I and you know.
And then you walked into Sean.
And then I'm like, boy, manifest that.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, and the other thing with Sean is he's been in here now, um he's been at some of our meetings, he's been, I'll call with some of the people.
Yeah, we've been to other meetings and he's on a lot of contacts and education, so I do think he would be a valuable member to have on the board. And you know, Desiree, I don't know uh her experience with, you know, land and and stuff, but you know, it's all learning curve and I know she's you know, experienced challenges within the community and the different um separate regarding neighbors and stuff, cause she's been at different meetings um with Slackboard.
She's in the village.
And she is in the village.
So that's good.
And was on town with uh, that's another thing that I thought is I'm like the only village person here.
You're the village people now.
So. Yeah, I'm only a village person. You guys are very talented.
You speak for it, you're wrong.
And uh so I just, it would be nice if another village. Individuals.
I mean, I'm, hey, she put her, I'm not saying this because so, but she put her name in the ring and there's something she said for that's why.
She came in multiple times.
She gave asking questions and stuff.
About about the most similar she replied.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think she came in one time wasn't here, then she came in back in two weeks and then she brought it in. So she came in three times, two inquiries.
Was this, have you talked to her about this? Or you just happen to know her?
I did. I do, I do know her. Everyone's her for over there.
I thought you said that um Joe. His name.
Joe was.
I think when it was for I O T G.
Yeah, she was, yeah.
This is okay. Um.
And but you know, if it's not like, if it's not a hell yeah.
Yeah.
It's enough. You know, so you want people that are.
We might not wanna be here.
That want to be there, that wanna be here, yeah.
Um. No, I'm open to, so the question is how in land do we wanna have conversations with these people or do we want to, do we feel comfortable enough just sending them right to the slackboard?
I need to interview. As far as the written stuff, I think we all know Sean enough. And.
I'm surprised they're not here at the meeting.
It wasn't.
She didn't get to work. And it wasn't a requirement.
It, we didn't, we didn't warn it on the as as that.
Sean, I think we know enough and based on her all the references and experiences she provided, I don't see that that.
But she put this much time into.
Ask me now, but why would we not accept?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
But she did a lot more than I did.
And they let you in.
Exactly. Well, and it sounds like you you know her.
Yeah.
And well known to say.
That they're characters of, and like the job that she had to be.
And there was, what I would say is if you didn't know her and hadn't just said what she just said, we might say, ah, let's meet her, but.
She's been to Slackboard meetings, she's had challenges with.
So that.
She understands the value of having rules to protect neighbors from neighbors. Does that make sense?
And she brings a new, fresh ideas.
And. A little bit subjective and I mean.
Just like you did.
And she might be bored out of her mind if you're like, you know what, I don't wanna do this anymore. Never back to square one, but um.
I think it's good we have like Sean who's got a ton of experience and then someone with no experience. Because like you.
They're gonna ask questions.
You you, what you do a lot of times, like even when you're like asking questions and wanting to understand more makes us, makes me sometimes like
Yeah.
frick, I haven't thought about that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's what I would say about uh someone that's super green like that. It's like, oh, yep, we never thought about that.
So while I have this long train of thought in my head, do you want me to change the website to say the planning commission meets the second Tuesday of every month at five o'clock? Okay, you support that?
Five o'clock's it helps me with that time.
Me too.
Was mine, I was.
Cause I'm home before that time.
Yeah, time and it was a mess.
And I was getting home after.
Does that work for you?
That looks good for me. I mean, I think they're gonna attack me though soon, but I mean, I just don't have people that I can.
And what I would say is our docket. Hopefully.
It's already done at five o'clock.
But that's not true. I have something I need to add. I think before we jump too far into reviewing new regulations, we need to figure out the enforcement thing.
Oh, that's all that.
Because we'll get there. But I just, I mean, I don't wanna go make a whole bunch of new rules if they're not gonna follow mine.
Well, yeah, hold on, let's finish it.
But finish it. So when you come to the select board on Tuesday, do you guys plan to come to a Slackboard meeting? I wanna need to warn it correctly, two, we need to put it on the agenda. Do you wanna put on the agenda?
We won't.
I don't think we need to run it. We won't have a tomorrow.
I don't want to.
Okay.
Do I have to?
No, no.
No, no, no.
No, no.
But if you're going to have a court, I'm like, you need me to be here.
You. No. No, don't try to, I may not be able to make it because.
No, no.
I'll try because I wanna, I think I know what the controversy with the meeting is, I wanna.
So do you want to come and support?
There'll be a.
I feel like one of you should come.
But Albert has said no, I need to go to the select.
Listen to me.
Thank you, Albert.
Do you want to support them appointing these two people and support this project?
The people? Is that gonna be, that's.
It should be important to have a voice of plan promotion that you support this idea.
But are they discussing?
Yes, the girl is coming.
But the 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 people, that's that's not on the agenda.
We've done this not done yet, it can be on there if you want to.
Oh, I thought I'd be warned by now.
No, no, no.
So it is.
It'll be, the agenda will be defined in the next few days.
What's the tea? What's the tea now?
Okay. At least I'm sure the camera.
Yeah.
Um.
The conversation for a little later.
Um. You, I'm on board with.
So do. Do you support these two applicants being appointed?
Without meeting them, I'm fine with it if you guys are.
I'm fine with it.
So do you wanna make a motion to?
Have them at the select board?
No, make a motion to support the appointment of these two applicants to the select board for them.
I would entertain a motion from the board to
Move forward.
To move forward to uh provide the
They.
Hmm so.
That has to do.
With information.
Whether.
And I can give the copies of these as well.
Desiree would do and Sean Genie to the swamped in. Open be uh make more meetings. I will.
I'm making, I am making the motion through our roster, so you would say so, so moved.
Motion been made.
On second.
And seconded. Is there now any discussion?
So what I will do is I will call them both and tell them that that's what you guys are choosing to do and if they choose to come on Tuesday night, they can.
That's.
Have they?
No, they don't. I had to know.
If they wanna be appointed by the platform, they should be there.
Cause they have. They may want to.
Do they have to?
They have, they should.
Yeah, they have to.
They have to just be there.
Because there has to be an item on their agenda because they asked.
They.
If all I see, they.
Yeah, they definitely ask you. Yeah, they definitely ask you questions, it's really down the select board, they ask the people, why do you wanna be on the board, people, I remember having that. A question.
I don't remember that, but I had it years ago, I had it years ago.
Well, not all of them. But it also, you know. But okay, it also sh-
It shows your mission to it, yeah.
But it shouldn't, it shouldn't be an interview about the select board either.
It is. Because they're technically the ones hiring and.
Yeah. That's really good, cause.
We.
Yeah, that really. I do remember that, so.
It's not that.
We were, you guys were supposed to.
Crazy.
We nominated that.
Kids. And I went straight to the select board and you guys were like, wait a minute, we need to get interview Heather, we have to meet Heather.
I don't remember that.
It was um the guy that was the chair.
Janine? So Janine, speak up, of her?
What's that? Yes.
That's better.
Yes. And he's like, well, I would like to interview her, we didn't, we're hearing about this.
Okay, so I would.
But Amy was the one that was like, Heather, you wanna do this? And I'm like, I don't know, and she goes.
It's funny, what?
Okay.
I will update these money now.
Okay, so.
Alright, that's put to bed.
Yeah.
Meeting, you, our regular meetings are put to bed.
Really?
Yeah, okay.
You're gonna go to the select board meeting on Thursday?
The sixteen?
Six P M.
Sixty M, put it in your calendar.
You took this.
Okay, that'll do, that'll make it around, you just bop around and put it to Mariah. Um.
You can still go, but no, it's be knowing you're a local person.
No. So, so you guys know.
I think that's important, especially for that.
You wanna come here, take over, wanna take that paper? Yeah, take, you wanna take that paper?
We understand.
Hey.
But it's.
The only beef I have with that is the, the walkability stuff.
Not friendly, I have half a. I have half a.
So.
He went, ooh.
I'm like, okay for order back there, cause you know what, I'm gonna be that stuff.
The law.
Never.
My only beef with that is to be able to stand you the whole walkability shit.
I don't know anything about any of that.
We had a couple, they've talked about it. I'm too maybe I'll.
I guess.
There's always.
Yeah, because they won't let Southern Grove District in, because there's no walkability, because there's like a highway out there, and so, and the rail trails there. And then.
I'm beginning to get a sidewalk from the bridge, like.
What are we gonna get a sidewalk next to the park that we're gonna be working on all summer?
There's room, there's room, you squeeze.
Are they gonna put?
Put a road and you don't need a grassy knoll in between it.
I know the right way.
People walk from the side of the road right now.
I know, you're, you're not wrong.
A curb and a three foot sidewalk is gonna be mild better than a three foot, obviously.
You're, you are correct.
Four feet, four feet and a curb is going to.
So if you're going to, you don't need a letter to support the.
If all were called up. I would say like, hey, give them something.
Well, here's the color. Like the Florida, the Florida winters, sorry.
Nine four.
The next one will be, I'm sick of feast meals, like those I have to print in one office, the colored side, and then the black and white pages I print up there.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Let your.
Um.
Make it work.
Alright, what's next?
So that brings us.
Yeah, we're getting out of here soon.
Yeah, we are about to get out of here, meeting's made. Next meeting, so we're gonna go until November.
So your next meeting will be October fourteenth at five o'clock.
And we will, that will be, and we discuss.
Yes. Grad will.
And we discuss.
Grad will not.
Management.
Grad will be here on the eleventh of November, it's not a holiday weekend or anything, is it? The boys school that weekend, October fourteenth.
What? October.
Uh, uh, that's the, that's a Tuesday, the fourth of.
It doesn't have like a day off at some point?
It's the previous Friday.
It's Fridays off?
It's a Thursday, Fridays, teachers' convention, I think they call that.
Schedule a day off for teachers, cause they're overworked.
Don't even start it on that.
Is it former teacher for a reason?
Oh, you should get me fired up on A O E right now.
I'm getting out early today, focus, focus.
A O E is what? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not A O E. So, government.
Alright, next item of business on our agenda, planning commission, public comment, any other necessary business we talked about, that's all of it.
What about what you called me about today, you wanna do that on fourteenth?
Oh, no, we do, that goes along with Oliver's.
But that needs to be discussed at. Do you wanna?
That needs to be on, that needs to be on the agenda at fourteen. That goes along with what Oliver talked about with the enforcement.
So.
My beef is.
Then you wanna go to the flipboard the next meeting with your budget idea because you're the new.
Budget idea? We, so. We need to have a conversation surrounding A staff and B planning for our future. We. And this isn't, this is something you guys have heard me talk about, we need to be more proactive when it comes to looking at crafty ways to. Bring businesses in, and I think the town needs to come up with some sort of budget plan to bring an outside entity in to help us. Build out business and industry because just merely adding houses is not gonna offset our taxes. Does that make sense?
Yes.
No.
Not at all, because most people.
Yeah.
I don't understand is.
You have one kid, you only can pay in a taxes to pay for that one kid to go to school for that.
You have three kids, right?
And what are the two in school? I get.
Two in school.
But what are fifteen thousand, yeah?
But you, you had three potentially at one point.
I had four, I had four.
You had four kids, wow.
There were six in my family.
So, think about your taxes with the four kids. Over your span, your lifetime, yes, might offset those costs, but. I have three kids, my taxes don't cover nearly what my three kids are gonna eat up for the next eighteen years in Swanton schools. Um.
Well, they're all just kids, probably not going to school for eighteen years.
Enjoy.
Well, Peter.
They take that for their mother.
Charlie's three in preschool at Swan Elementary, so.
Good.
It is true, it's hard to believe.
Like, definitely. Good.
Three at Swan with Miss Rebecca, she's amazing.
I see within the best part of the Middle East, right?
Oh. Uh, so. The point being, um.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, so if we have businesses, but where do you intend for those businesses to be?
Southern Grove. But the my question.
Uh.
Industrial development or industrial.
My question is.
Um, but also that person could potentially be helping to offset some of our.
Zoning problems.
Zoning problems.
So like those packets and stuff like that.
Sweet. With Elizabeth, yeah, like what Elizabeth did to do.
Like, what it is, Elizabeth, and the only reason this came up is because anyways, I called. About another problem that I have with some stuff we need to take care of. Is I called Cory to ask him about some stuff. What I called Cory about is I have a very, very big problem with the fact that. We are giving people purple or pink P signs. For projects that they do not have permits for. And where this first mainly came up was when the town, the village put out great pink P for the new building up on Route seven. And all that P is used for is to notify people that there's a meeting. Everybody immediately thought the village had a good permit to put a building there and hadn't even been to that site. Or yet.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? The city of Burlington uses a sign that has a Z on it. And Burlington uses a Z and that's the name, that's your warning, if your neighbor wants to put a Z in the front of their house, that means. I have a meeting coming up where I am going to tell the D R, going before the D R B to potentially get it.
So does that still have the same information the P sign has?
Correct, like it's a. Will you get it, please? Did you get one of those?
Do you want tea?
Just so I can just show them.
I know, I had to get one when we're all good.
So. Here's, we had a item on the D R B agenda two weeks ago that did not get approved. I don't know if you know anything about that, um, the project on Route seven.
Yeah.
A person put a foundation in without a permit, house is too close to. The property line.
Oh.
Uh, they came in to get a permit after the pack, went before the D R B, D R B, D R B did not give them the.
What was that? What were?
Success in the minutes. Um, but this.
I, I'm worried, that's one of my friends that just has somebody complaining on Facebook.
No, so the reason, what I'm getting at is.
Is for our house?
Yeah, right now it's under seven.
Mm-hmm.
What I'm getting at is that person does not have a permit in fact for that pro- project. But he has this sitting in his front yard and everybody that drove and drive by sees a big red P. And would automatically assume there's a permit.
Uh, okay, I already get that.
In place, so my, and see, this is the difference, permit approval or public hearing. But we're. We're. You can't read that from the road.
Speak H then here, here.
Or C, well.
Bernier.
City of Burlington. Is, City of Burlington uses a red C for that. And so.
What does it stand for?
Zoning.
Yeah.
So.
How does that communicate?
Just so you know that something is happening, but it's not that they have a permit.
I drove by that property and assumed the person had permit until I read the D R B. And realized, the person doesn't have a permit.
So they have to move, they have to chisel away.
Well, that's a whole other, I have no idea what's gonna.
Where does that make sense? That's sad.
Well, the foundation is without a permit.
I'm surprised they're caught. There's plenty of people that just done it and then it gets skated through.
That's our point of, we need to have some enforcement because if they're just gonna let it skate through, I don't think I'm volunteering my time.
Well, I remember. Again.
I don't think I'm volunteering my time every month to come make rules if they're just gonna skate them through. And it's, it's already been a problem with the development on Woods Hill last year, we pointed out.
That's.
That was just put a Band-Aid on and not properly fixed.
Yeah.
So there needs, like, there needs to be not only a clear, like. Enforcement, but someone that's doing it.
How many hours a week does something like that take?
Enforcement, well, here's what I would say, here's.
There's not that much development on it's gonna take.
Here's what I would say is, my thought was, if we put some of the project review on the shoulders of a zoning, um.
Plan.
Sorry, and uh. Law.
Contractor.
Amy?
No, have Amy work, Amy's obviously got a lot on play. So if we had someone, if the town has someone that was flexible to assist Amy with some of these zoning. Wading through some of these permits and someone that's out there advocating for, and I, this is gonna sound really bad. Advocating for Amazon to be built in the Southern Grove District, or whatever it is, trying to work with businesses to bring businesses in. Is that's what's gonna offset the costs of our community is physics.
There's a lot.
Whether it's Amazon.
So basically what he does is.
What he meant was curdler ship, cause we need one of those.
Basically what he's talking about is it's contracting, it's contracting with someone like.
Yeah, but that's a free. It's free.
Resources.
We don't even have.
They pay a lot of resources, those are, those are.
Just fine.
True. You have.
But they pay a lot of money in taxes, they don't use any resources.
Yeah. They do.
Look at it that way, and then, well, that one doesn't, but the ones that I'm, they employ a lot of people and they pay good.
I personally like would, I'd like to see more buildings that are already here be renovated and being.
But that's, that's.
That was the cost of the thing.
It was good. And how do we incentivize, like I thought about it, like, couldn't we do something where if you're gonna renovate, we are not gonna increase your taxes for five years?
It's called a TIF.
And then, and then, and that way you have some.
Use all the taxes to.
And that person could help with those housing developments, that entry program.
That, that person, that, so essentially, I called Cory about this.
Yeah.
And it turned into a bigger conversation like.
Because you can contract with someone like Cory that does what he does to work ten hours a week to do what we're talking about.
Not even. Could work.
Wouldn't he do that?
He, he does, it's, but it's not a good one.
Yeah.
It's also, you've got to get the select board to approach this one, so.
That's.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, where can it wait? Um.
So the point is, the point I'm making is that I made a conversation, called him.
He knows that in Melbourne, right?
Because the town, state, all of them see, and essentially what it would be is someone to help with economic development. Like, which is what Elizabeth used to do, Elizabeth used to do halftime, kinda what Christina's doing, and halftime, what?
But she would also look for grants.
Cory.
Yeah, and so, and I know one of the issues that she would bring up is that people are interested in moving to Swanton with their businesses. But there aren't any ready-made areas and that's the biggest issue, is that there's works in progress. But people want moving ready when they move into with their business.
So, so a person, a contractor working on our behalf, you know, development, would be going out and meeting with developers and saying, hey. You wanna develop, make a development, I know of a piece of property in the village of Swanton or the town of Swanton to help make those connect. Like, without doing that, people aren't gonna come here and spend money.
When you could pay somebody like him to help develop your Southern Grove where you've mixed use, where you have.
Yeah.
That's, look for grants.
You got the water there.
Yeah, I like mixed use, it's, I mean, well.
No, see, TIF, can you use TIF to put like water, yeah.
Yeah. It's a magic program and you know how to do that, where they could do.
To use the.
Or how to get a, and I know the select board doesn't wanna hear this, we need to look at a local option tax.
I thought that was okay.
They put, they've been working on that, that's.
That's on their agenda, isn't it?
The.
They are working on it.
They sent the letter of recommendation to the state, they didn't pick it up last session, it's still on the wall.
I was like, what if it was a five year limit?
The board is, the state needs to change.
So it could start over again later.
Old law.
Tax?
So that it can be divided, the state needs to decide how it's divided, does the town or the village?
Yeah, it was a little option for five years.
For a while.
Big finish.
Cause they could decide how to do it, and then your next board, select board, you can just say, oh, we don't wanna divide that, right? The state needs to say how it's divided.
The problem with it too is.
Why does it need to be divided?
Do you wanna give it all to the town, you wanna give it all to the village, because they won't agree?
If the town's, the select board goes to the town.
But then if the village goes and passes their own, anybody who lives in the village is gonna pay twice.
Yeah, mhm.
So they're weak doing.
The village doesn't have a select board though.
The select board.
They have trucees. They have trucees in the old.
Yeah.
They do their own?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's.
I didn't understand that.
It's they for their own, when town goes for their own, people, everything you buy in the village.
So the problem.
It could say Alvin's like that.
St. Albans is a mess, and Swanton is a mess because so much stuff is purchased online now, that like, I have.
And they have where you are.
Yes, I have a St. Albans.
I didn't know about your days, so.
So do you pay six percent?
I have them. Yes.
Yeah.
That's why, that's the reality.
And I should, because I live in Swan.
And you know the other place that it was happening?
Yeah.
But, but even, but even if I do, if I go and buy something online and we have it.
So that is important.
How do they make sure the money goes to Swan?
Nothing was facts of this.
Okay, that's good enough.
That is still in process.
My other concern is if we.
But it still needs to be approved by the voters.
And I'm wait, I'm, we've been having six percent uh state tax for how long?
It will.
In the United States, when are they gonna increase it? And I don't wanna pay ten percent on things that I buy at my house, so I don't wanna pay seven or eight percent on the tax, state tax, that's fine, like, if it was a five year expiration, okay.
Right.
And then we could like use that money to try to offset some stuff, deal with projects, but not forever.
Well, wait. You say. What it's being used for when they.
Yeah, and you can't, what I, what I.
But. That. How, if we use that to repair this building, great, but if it's going to be like.
It's a lot of work to do for like five months.
The commonest taxes, they never go away, so if you, if you put this, the tuition tax, then people get used to the money being there.
Right.
And then they're like, they'll be ten of them, and we're gonna continue, like, whereas we're just gonna be like, well, look at all this money we gotta spend.
Thirty years.
Well, we're gonna give you this, and we're gonna do that, and we're gonna do this, and it's not gonna be necessarily like appreciated as much, cause it's just gonna advocate any of those.
The thing with the local options tax is kinda designed to take money from people that don't live in the community.
I understand that.
And we're paying for it all of this, that's my.
But I'm so, there's plenty of people that live here, they don't even shop here.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, that's true too, but.
But where you get it is the people that.
Stop at the store off the interstate.
Not all, the like, so you know, like, so.
I would, I would say that most of the items that we order, especially ads we have to order online anyways. So there's some values for adults at the local, you know, like stuff like that.
Two years ago, when I did the math on it, on the, online, the town of Swanton would pull them three hundred thousand dollars that year for one percent tax. One percent, three hundred thousand dollars, yeah.
Where. My brain goes, what I would, I would specifically, specifically. Year America twenty four is public recreation. Or public infrastructure, those projects that we've been trying to get taken care of.
That's why you have to take your own husband, I think the village will.
In Swanton for many, many years, whether it's a landfill. Whether it's a build out of our facilities, or it's putting in more infrastructure, so the Southern Grove District has water and sewer. That's my move. Is because without having a nest egg of money at some point to be able to put that infrastructure in.
Yeah.
We're never gonna have buildings out there and we're never.
I think you tip someone out.
The Southern Grove District, I mean, we had to have, we wanted our own, but.
And we.
Big pocket.
Yeah.
If we get water to Southern Grove, cause.
You already.
We have it.
Things, water's there.
The sewer's the problem, water's never the problem, it all just sort of.
Okay, so if we get sewer all the way out there, that means everybody along that road is also gonna get sewer, right? If they choose to.
If they buy, if we pay for it, they have to buy it.
But we pay to get it out there, and then there's maintenance and everything, right?
Not, but maintenance is pretty minimal on new. It's all the old stuff that breaks, the wooden pipes and the.
Oh. I mean, if I could have a, a load of cash to just put towards the project, I would want that parking lot over by the, the cross from Central School and turn it into like a, um. They have these exercise playgrounds for adults. Where it's like just tubes of metal, have you seen this in Asia that are everywhere? And it's just a gathering spot for elderly people, and they're just, it looks like a playground, but it's actually exercise equipment.
For adults.
That's outside all the time for adults, so it's like.
So, yeah, it's shared out in the hall.
Um, I don't know, but it's my dream, I'm like, it's sort of the location.
Cause those might get the.
It should.
That's who I, I believe it.
It's good.
It's allocated for.
Good.
It's the, and for what?
The rec department, and what they do is they determine, but people aren't there all the time.
That. I. But sometimes I wonder, I'm like, anyway.
Okay, I think. Not even true, no, you're, you're right. So that's my vision for that money is that hopefully invest in infrastructure that brings people in. We can't compete with state offices, right? I mean, we can, but look at the facilities they have.
If they all just. I don't know how long this is gonna last.
But at the same time, are you just facility, I'm like, look at me, I don't pay extra tax for this.
They can use them, you pay a lot more to use them, they, they use it for, they use it for free.
I go to the bay, I go to the bay, that's free.
Yeah, but the smell is, dude.
It's not that direct, it's not that bad, and you have a bunch of covered areas that you can go and bring a lunch in the rain and hang out there.
Right.
They have baseball, they have other, and I'm like, why we need that if it's only five miles on the street?
On beach, you can go down.
True, what I would say is, here's an example, our land in Shattagay. We have a deer camp in Shattagay. The town of Shattagay, which is size of Swan, maybe smaller, size of Swan. Size of Swan, maybe smaller size of Swan. Not a lot going on there either. Has an older pool that has been there for fifteen, twenty years. They have a small regular site. We go there with my kids all the time when we're at camp. It is the hub packed with kids, packed with families.
I've gotta get something to do.
All the time. There and it's free. It's we because we pay taxes. We ask them. We ask the whole manager like, hey, we paid tax. We're landowners here. Yeah, you're fine. You don't need to pay. And it is packed. I'm not saying the rec department isn't, but adding those types of things to the community is gonna help.
Four years, one whole beach.
We don't need a. In-ground pool with a balloon dog off this.
It's free.
Yeah, but.
You bend to the beach in the sun like right now.
Is it really uh?
I wouldn't let my I wouldn't let my dogs swim there.
Does that have a lot of plants in the ground?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a beach. It's a sand dune. Uh, anyways. Uh, I just gotta, are you coming home soon, guys?
But I don't wanna duplicate things that we could get nearby.
Um. Why? You're not wrong.
They would have been a voucher.
So.
But it's fifty bucks for my family to go to the state all this pool.
Yeah.
Like. Cause.
Is that she?
No, it's expensive.
For what term?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Would it just one day?
Yeah.
Ten dollars per person.
With her membership? How much does it?
A membership at the pool for six months is like six hundred dollars.
Well, that was one that for non-residents.
Yeah. Is it's I'm not talking. Then you gotta pay bills. I'm I'm not talking to you till like.
Well, they make like twelve or fourteen hundred dollars for the pass for the library for.
Anybody use.
Yeah.
So you can go get the pass at the library to go use it, bring it back.
I don't understand that project like for me because I feel like it's very expensive. And it's it's not like it's free. It's not like it's free, but it's owned by.
But it's good for. It's not at all. That loses money every year.
It's owned by the town.
Yeah.
So that's kind of weird like that.
It's it's owned by the town because of.
It's like.
Yeah, but a rec. Swan had soccer. It's not free. Your kids play soccer at the rec department. That's not free.
The Swanton and Swanton rec is is more affordable than St. Elwens. They buy a lot.
And they are.
I paid for my kids to play track, run track there and it was a whole lot cheaper to go to another town.
So anyways.
Some people come from other other towns and do that.
Yeah, I do.
That would they so they finally raised the price for that, but it's like.
And they're pretty hurt up and.
They went thirty-five.
Um.
For them to play, which is fine. Maybe you can get over two hundred and you know, they pay offense, yeah.
Allowing pierdine commercial adjustment and lot size. That's good. That's good. Uh, we talked about a couple things. Talked a little bit about. I and I might have a conversation that I'd like to go to that meeting. Maybe can you wanna talk about the enforcement stuff at the select board meeting maybe next?
I don't know if they're gonna permit this meeting to get off.
Okay. I will.
Well, and then I think at the your meeting on the fourteenth too, because I said.
Sorry.
And then you wrote them a meeting the following the select board.
Or send a letter.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn planning commission.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion been made. Seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned at six thirty-five. Yeah.